Thank you. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Madera City Council. Today is Wednesday, June 18th, 2025. The time is 6 o'clock PM, and I will turn this over to the city clerk Gonzalez.
The Madera City Council meetings are open to the public. This meeting will also be available for public viewing and participation through Zoom. Members of the public may also observe the live streaming meeting on the city's website at www.madera.gov/live. Members of the public can comment on agenda items at the meeting or remotely through an electronic meeting via phone by dialing 669-900-6833, enter ID 89027559864. Press star nine to raise your hand to comment and star six to unmute yourself to speak. Comments will also be accepted via email at citycouncilpubliccomment@madera.gov or by regular mail at 205 West Fourth Street, 93637. As a reminder, Wordly is our translation service, and there's a QR code on the cover of the agenda. It's also on our YouTube website if you'd like to access Wordly to translate into the language of your choice.
Thank you. Thank you, city clerk. I will call this meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Mayor Gallegos.
Here.
Mayor Protem Rodriguez.
Here.
Councilmember Zachariah.
Here.
Councilmember Montez is absent. Councilmember Evans.
Here.
Councilmember Mejia.
Here.
And councilmember Villegas.
I'm here.
Thank you for that. Invocation will be by Pastor Lance Leach from Valley West Christian Center, and the Pledge of Allegiance. Please remain standing for Mayor Protem Rodriguez.
Want to, on behalf of all of the guests, fellow citizens of Madera, staff, council members, Mayor Gallegos, it's an honor on behalf of Madera Administrative Association to open in prayer over our community, over our city. Let's pray. Father God, we are so blessed to be in this community with all the things that are happening across the world, across the globe. We look at the heart of Madera, the heart of California, Madera, and we're blessed. We thank you for those that have labored so hard to make this city a place of peace, a place of love, joy, happiness. We thank you for our graduates who've walked across the stage this last month, and we're so proud of them. We thank you for all of our teachers and ask you to give them a blessed break over the summer. God, I see law enforcement here. I see those that protect and serve across our community. We ask you to continue to keep them safe across Madera, protect them, guide them, give them wisdom. And most of all, we come here today to ask your guidance for our council members, for our mayor. We thank you for their service. We thank you for setting them apart and for them setting time from their family, from the loved ones, from their jobs, their businesses, to say that I care about our community, I care about Madera. And so, God, we pray that you not only bless them, protect them, strengthen them, keep care over them, but give them the wisdom that they ask for, the wisdom they need. I pray for healthy conversations that we know that everything that is agreed upon isn't always what's best, but sometimes things that are fought over, sometimes things that are talked about and really taken time for are the things that are best for our community. So I thank you for their patience. I thank you for their perseverance and that bulldog tenacity that they love this city and they love their constituents so much. So thank you from Madera, blessings over it, and this evening as well. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I'll salute the flag. Ready? Salute.
Thank you, Pastor Leach and Mayor Protem Rodriguez. Moving on to the approval of the agenda. I'll bring it to my colleagues of any questions or concerns. If not, I entertain a motion.
Motion to approve is written.
Second.
I have a motion and second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes unanimously. Thank you for that. Moving on to the next item, city clerk Gonzalez.
Under Presentations, presentation number one is recognition of Madera County Museum 2025 Best of Central California People's Choice Award.
Good evening, everyone. It's an honor to present this, to call up Mr. Hart and Ms. Berry, please. They are the representatives for our Madera County Historical Museum. I have to tell you, this award was won by everyone in this community. You had to vote to make sure this museum won, and it was given to this community through Facebook, through Instagram, through just word of mouth. And because of that, we were chosen and being recognized for the People's Choice of the 2025 for being the best museum in the Central Valley, correct? So on behalf of the council and Mayor C.C. Gallegos, I recognize you with this outstanding contribution to the culture's landscape of Central California for the earning the prestigious Gold Award in the Best Museums quote-quote category in the vast Central Valley. And I went through the magazine. It wasn't just the best museum, it was also the best attraction. There was two.
It was third in that.
Third in that. Okay, I must have misread it. Mayor's looking at stuff at 1:00 in the morning, so that's when I get my reading done. And so, your dedication to preserving this museum and our community's history and fostering the public engagement has set a remarkable standard of excellence. So with that, we congratulate both of you and your team for all their hard work. And if you get a chance, the museum's open certain times. Look on the websites and take a look at it if you haven't been there. Take some of your grandchildren, your nephews, your nieces, and maybe your neighbors if they need something fun to do this summer or in the fall when it cools down. It's too, oh, it's too hot. Well, when it cools down in the fall. So with that, if one of you would like to share any words.
I'm Cheryl Berry, and I've been the president of the Historical Society for a number of years. But we just have had a tremendous year. We celebrated our 50th anniversary of the museum being open in September. We celebrated our 70th year of the Historical Society in May. Then this award on top of it. There was actually three awards. The best, first place for best museum in Central California, first place in best place to volunteer in Central California, and then third place in attraction. And that was behind Rhodyne Park, I mean, Chappy Zoo. I'm sorry, Chappy Zoo and Forsters Underground Gardens. So we went against the big dogs. Fresno Historical Society and the Fresno Art Museum have won those category every year. So we did very well. And it's only because of all the support from the community, from the county, the city, the Chamber of Commerce, the Madera Tribune, and Madera Memories Facebook page was phenomenal because it went out to everybody. It went all over the country. So the gal that, Dennis Boquist, she said, "You must have a good following up there in Madera." And we said, "Yeah, we do." So we were really surprised and happy about this. So it's a great thing for everybody. And we will be, I don't know if we're open this weekend or not because it's so hot. We will not be open past this week until like mid-September because of the heat. We don't have air conditioning, so it's a little too warm in there. So thank you so much.
Thank you. My name's Dennis Hart, and I first realized that this might be a big deal when we were nominated right here at the city council meeting. We had just been notified, and I came to the council to say, "You can vote. Here's how you can vote." And I was here the night that councilmember Zachariah was sworn in. So we had a big crowd just like this tonight. And as soon as I mentioned that we'd been nominated, I was startled because the crowd applauded instantaneously. And I looked around, and I went back to the board of directors, and I said, "I think this could be something. I think this could energize the community." And it did. And as Cheryl has mentioned, all the folks who got behind us, everybody got behind us. People voted every day, several times a day on different computers, et cetera, et cetera. And I remember suggesting to you folks here that night that maybe David can beat Goliath. And doggone it, we had the slingshot, and you did it. So this is a big deal, I think, for the entire community. We are so proud to be part of this, and it's for you. And we hope the community comes to see us, enjoys it. Thank you so very much for all of your support. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
For this evening's second presentation, it's the proclamation recognizing June as Pride Month.
Can I please have Activities Director Isaac Lopez come forward with his students?
Okay. Good evening, everyone. It is truly a privilege and an honor to be able to present this proclamation for you tonight. Before I read the proclamation, I do want to share with you all a story that happened here in our local high school 18 years ago. When I was a student at Madera High School, I was one of the first few members of the Madera High School Gay-Straight Alliance Club. Our membership was small but mighty, and we were deeply committed to creating awareness. I still remember one of the first actions we took. We put duct tape over our mouths for an entire school day. It was a quiet, powerful protest to show how lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, and plus identifying folks are censored and silenced every day. Many people didn't understand it then, and sadly, many still don't understand the harassment, the bullying, and the injustices that the LGBTQ+ community continues to face today. But we remained steadfast. We were committed to creating a safe and open space for LGBTQ students at our school, even in the face of hate, not just from peers, but from adults in the community as well. And so, it means a great deal to me to see all of you here, physically present, receiving this proclamation today. I want you to know, most of our members from back then have gone on to lead happy and fulfilling lives, and that is my deepest wish for all of you, to lead lives that are happy, fulfilling, and true to who you are, to hold space for yourselves, to create space for others when it's needed, and to always remember, you are an important part of our community. You matter. You are worthy of respect. You make our world better simply because you are in it. And I truly hope that, as a society, we continue to move forward in a more inclusive and compassionate direction for everyone. With that, I will now read the proclamation. Whereas the month of June is recognized as lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer LGBTQ Pride Month throughout the central San Joaquin Valley, and whereas Madera joins communities throughout the Central Valley to observe Pride Month and to support the rights of all residents to experience equality and freedom from discrimination, and whereas the rainbow flag is widely recognized as a symbol of pride, inclusion, and support for social movements that advocated for LGBTQ people in society, and whereas all human beings are born free and equal in dignity and rights, LGBTQ individuals have had immeasurable impact to the cultural, civic, and economic successes of our country. And whereas the city of Madera is committed to supporting visibility, dignity, and equality for LGBTQ people in our diverse community, now therefore, it be resolved that I, Councilwoman Elsa Mejia and our mayor, C.C. Gallegos of the city of Madera, and on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby proclaim June 2025 as Pride Month. Thank you and congratulations.
Hello, I'm Scarlett, and I was the president of the GSA club this previous school year. And this is my friend Gabby, and she was our secretary. And thank you so much for this recognition, and just know we are here and to continue to love everybody. Thank you.
And now, moving on to presentation number three. It's proclamation recognizing Juneteenth Day.
Blessings, everyone. It is so good to see each and every one of you here tonight. The city of Madera is a diverse city. But this month, we're celebrating a very special day. It's the day that our ancestors, my ancestors, were freed from slavery. The Emancipation Proclamation, 1865. For those of you that don't know, go and read your history. There's a lot of things that have happened. We see so much destruction in the world right now. And it's not only the people of color, it's everyone. So we just want to ask each and every one of you, tomorrow, we celebrate Juneteenth because tomorrow is June 19th. We will be at the Courthouse Park, and we will be in full force. But at this time, I have two very special people that I've known for just a short period of time, but I have truly grown to love them, my brothers and my sisters. My brother, Pastor Sammy Neely, and First Lady, Yvonne Neely. Would you please come? They moved through to the Central Valley in 1974, after being married just a few years, and have beautiful children. And now, they are the representatives this year and the recipients of the proclamation from the city of Madera for Juneteenth Month. Whereas African-American enslaved in Galveston, Texas, first learned of their freedom, June 19th, 1865, two and a half years after the Emancipation Proclamation was issued by President Abraham Lincoln became effective. And whereas since the time, June 19th, has become known as Juneteenth, it is recognized as the oldest known celebration of the end of slavery in the United States. And whereas since 1865, the observance of June 19th, Emancipation Day, has spread across the United States and beyond. And whereas, June 19th not only commemorates African-American freedom, but it also emphasizes education, self-involvement, the achievement of African-American unity, and is marked with public readings and Emancipation Proclamation and the celebration with family and friends. Now therefore, be it as I, Councilwoman Anita Evans, the city of Madera, Mayor C.C. Gallegos, the city of Madera, and on behalf of all of my colleagues and the entire council, we congratulate you as recipients.
Good evening, everyone. I am somewhat speechless at this event in that we have labeled this as only an African-American holiday. This is a national holiday. This is something that should be recognized as the fulfillment of our very constitution of liberty and justice fall. So as we go forth in the celebration, let us remember this is a celebration of unity, not separation. We are separated too many times, and we need to come together and become the one nation under God that we have always proclaimed in our pledge. God bless you.
One thing I would like for you to know as well, Pastor Neely is our keynote speaker tomorrow as well. So what you just heard right now is just a small taste of the dynamic message he's going to give to us tomorrow. So we hope to see you there, 10:00 in the morning.
And for our final presentation this evening, we'd like to invite Mid Valley Disposal to the podium to recognize the 2025 scholarship recipients.
And that will be Billy. Is Casey also going to join you? No? Okay, come on up.
Thank you so much, Mayor and Council, for having me here tonight. As mentioned, my name is Billy Hanson. I'm here with Mid Valley Disposal. We are your trash haulers in the city. And tonight, I'm here to recognize those students in Madera that received the Mid Valley Disposal Scholarship. So if you are here tonight and you are one of the recipients, come on up. We've got two of them here tonight out of three, which is really great. So it is such a pleasure to be here with you as we celebrate three incredible winners of the Mid Valley Disposal Scholarship. At Mid Valley Disposal, we believe in the power of supporting our youth and their educational dreams. After all, these bright students are the future of our community, and we want to do our part to help them achieve their goals. This year's decision was definitely a tough one. There were so many amazing applicants. But after careful consideration, we are thrilled to introduce this year's winners. We have here tonight Angelique Hernandez from Madera High School. We're so excited that you're here tonight. Thank you for joining us. We also have Rodrigo Rincon from Matilda Torres High School. And we're excited to see all of the great things that both of you will accomplish. We have a third recipient who unfortunately couldn't join us tonight. She fell sick. Her name is Shaiema Adele Mosen, and she is from Madera South High School. These three students have worked so hard and are already showing the kind of determination and passion that will take them far. And we are incredibly proud to support their educational journeys, and we cannot wait to see where you guys go next. So on behalf of everybody at Mid Valley Disposal, thank you for letting us be a part of this special moment. We wish you all the best as you continue to chase your dreams.
You want to? Let us know what you're, are you going to college? What your plans are for trade school? Your aspirations?
Hello, everyone. As previously stated before, my name is Rodrigo Rincon. Some few things about me is I love volunteering. I'm super honored to have gotten the Mid Valley Disposal Scholarship. As previously stated, it was a hard thing. I wasn't even aware. I'm so sorry. I plan to go to college over there at UC Merced so I can still stay local in Madera and help out wherever I can. So you'll probably still see me volunteering on many things as I'm part of the Madera Leo's Club and soon to be Omega. I plan on studying econ and management at UC Merced with a minor in political science. And I'm not sure what else to say, so go up to my fellow cohort. Oh. I also forgot, I brought my dad over there, sitting down.
Hello, everybody. My name is Angelique Hernandez. I'm here with my mom and my younger sisters. So I plan on going to UCSD and pursuing a degree in biology to hopefully one day become a dentist. I'm very grateful for this, to have been chosen for this award and to have the support to continue my academic future. And I would like to say thank you again for this opportunity. And yes, thank you.
Ready? One, two, three.
Thank you for being here tonight, Mid Valley, and the families of our recipients in this scholarship. Congratulations. Moving on, city clerk, to public comment.
The first 15 minutes of the meeting are reserved for members of the public to address the council on items which are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. Speakers shall be limited to three minutes. Speakers will be asked but are not required to identify themselves and state the subject of their comments. If the subject is an item on the agenda, the mayor has the option of asking the speaker to hold the comment until that item is called. Comments on items listed as a public hearing on the agenda should be held until the hearing is opened. The council is prohibited by law from taking any action on matters discussed that are not on the agenda, and no adverse conclusions should be drawn if the council does not respond to public comment at this time.
Thank you for that. At this time, I open it for public comment. If there's anybody in the audience that would like to have a comment that's something that's not on the agenda, please come up to the podium. I see none. Anybody online or on Zoom?
We have none, Mayor.
Thank you. With that, I close public comment at this time, and we move on to the next item.
Next item is public hearings. We have none. On to consent calendar. Matters listed under the consent calendar are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion and one vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If the discussion is desired, a member of the public or a member of the council may request an item to be removed from the consent calendar, and it will be considered separately.
Thank you for that. I will bring it back to my colleagues for any questions or concerns. Our city clerk has one that she has a comment on.
Thank you, Mayor. For item B16, staff is requesting to pull this item simply to make a clerical correction. The notice of compliant, when we record those documents at the county, they require us to have an address listed on the notice of compliance, and it was published in the agenda with its stating simply in Madera City limits. So the notice has been corrected. Council has a copy at the dais. There is a copy at the podium if a member of the public wishes to review that item. And with that, I turn it back over to you, Mayor.
Thank you. With that, I open it up to public comment. I see none. Anyone on Zoom or online?
We have none, Mayor.
Thank you. I will close public comment and bring it back to my colleagues for a motion pulling B16.
Mayor, just for clarification, are we pulling it or are we just adding the correction that there's a notice of completion?
We're going to pull it for corrections, but they're going to come up and do that after we approve it.
They've already provided the notice of completion, so I...
Okay.
Right, as I'm saying, there was just a correction of the city limits.
Correct. Correct.
Okay, so with that, I'll go ahead and move to approve the consent calendar with that correction on item B16.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
A motion and second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes unanimously. Thank you for that. Moving on to the next item. Those opposed, motion passes unanimously. Thank you for that. Moving on to the next item.
Item C is workshops. We have none. Item section D is petitions, bids, resolutions, ordinances, and agreements. Item D1 is consideration of an agreement with Flexlinks LLC for consultation services for the preparation of a micro transit feasibility study.
Thank you. And that will be presented by our grants manager, Zuniga.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor, City Council members, members of the public. Today I am here with item D1. Oh, sorry. There we go. Item D1, which is the request to enter into an agreement with Flexlinks LLC for a consultation services agreement to develop a micro transit feasibility study. So on a little bit of background on this request, on April 21st, 2021, WSP USA Inc. was awarded a service agreement for the development of the Madera Transit Plan, which is also a service assessment. The MTP resulted in a revised fixed route system and the addition of a fourth route, which resulted in new route names and identifiers. The redesigned fixed route system went into service January 2024. So why are we requesting a micro transit feasibility analysis? The MTP was solely focused on fixed route. The evaluation analysis was based in part on the review of the physical bus stops, including the location, public access, and the amenities at each bus stop. A micro transit feasibility study will provide a system-wide transit analysis. Micro transit can take on many forms. The study's outcome will assess local needs and develop a plan to close a gap in public transit ridership. Transit has characteristics that evolve continuously. Ridership is influenced by new private transportation options such as Uber and Lyft. Micro transit is an example of a public transit option that can offer seamless integration with the larger transportation system. It is a technology-enabled shared transportation that can integrate with our fixed route systems. It is on-demand transportation. The vehicles can range from cars, vans, or buses. The main goal is to expand transit services in an efficient, cost-effective, and environmentally-friendly manner. Currently, the cost for the city's public transit system is paid for with federal funds from the Federal Transit Administration. FTA encourages agencies to adopt sustainable practices in operations and projects and describes strategies during the application for funds process. Deploying a micro transit feasibility study rather than implementing a pilot micro transit system will provide program detail required by the FTA. In January 2025, staff published a request for proposal soliciting a contract to provide consulting services for the development of a micro transit feasibility study. Flexlinks was one of four respondents. Staff is recommending award of a one-year contract to Flexlinks LLC to prepare the study. So two prospective vendors were emailed directly. 16 registered vendors were notified via Planet Bids. 239 additional vendors registered with other agencies were also notified. 25 vendors downloaded the procurement documents. 22 vendors indicated they would submit a proposal. We had seven firms attend a pre-proposal meeting held on January 15th, 2025. Consequently, four proposals were received. The scope of work consisted of an analysis of the existing conditions, options for the different types of development that micro transit could offer the city of Madera, stakeholder engagement, additional option refinement, and then the development of an actual implementation plan. The four proposals were reviewed by an evaluation panel. The top three scoring firms were invited to participate in a mandatory oral interview and present their proposal. Before interviews were held, one firm retracted his proposal citing staffing constraints. The two remaining firms met with the evaluation team. Based on the scores from the written proposal and the presentation, Flexlink scored just slightly higher. So this table is a summary of the scores. We can see the combined scores towards the end of the chart with Flexlinks just above Via Mobility LLC. This table summarizes the cost proposal submitted by Flexlink. It has, there are six total tasks, as I mentioned, and we do include the breakdown of the cost per task with the total cost proposal of $198,505. As I mentioned, Flexlink scored slightly higher than Via Mobility, but their cost proposal was also higher. Flexlink was ultimately selected based on the following factors. Their proposal and presentation was very strongly focused on working with small agencies and the background that they have in that. They had a strong sense of eagerness to continue to want to work with small agencies. They have a local presence in Madera of their community engagement staff. They partner with a third party for community engagement and staff, the lead staff for that, with that particular organization is actually a resident of Madera and during the oral interview was able to speak very directly about the different community zones within Madera. So that was, that was nice. They are also a certified disadvantaged business enterprise, a DBE. The FTA requires the city to come, there are lots of requirements surrounding DBE, so this is a huge advantage for the city of Madera to potentially enter into a contract with a certified DBE. Their worktime methodology explicitly described compliance with specific FTA reporting requirements such as ADA and the National Transit Database, NTD. Again, very helpful for staff as we read through that because it gave us a strong sense of their understanding of what we would need from them in the data and everything that we would be asking of them so that we can report to the FTA. So tonight, staff's recommendation is to approve an agreement with Flexlinks LLC and the city of Madera, providing consulting services for the development of a micro transit feasibility study in the amount of $198,505 for a one-year term beginning June 18th, 2025 through June 30th, 2026. I do believe we have one or two individuals on Zoom from Flexlinks if there are any specific questions for them.
Thank you for that report. I'll bring it back to my colleagues for any questions or concerns. Mayor Pro Tim Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor Gagos. Director Zuniga, thank you for your presentation. The city has a RFP process where they look for the lowest and most responsive bidder. You mentioned several of the, or you indicated in your report several factors as to why we went with something that's $15,000 more. Obviously, that cost, we have to justify by the bullet points you had there. You know, the state, the focus, the local presence, and they're certified in certain fields. Would we say that that justifies that $15,000?
Yes, there's actually a form that we have on file that we filed in our procurement process with our procurement manager that if audited, if this case were audited by FTA, we would have as justification. So we were able to explain it, document it, and it would keep us in compliance with the FTA.
Thank you. And just, this is more for transparency. In many cases, we look for the lowest and most responsive. Obviously, in this case, we're not looking for the lowest, but more the responsive. Just to be transparent, that sometimes there's, there's bids that we get that are a bit higher, but there's a justification as to why we go there. So thank you. Appreciate you answering that.
Thank you.
Thank you for that comment. Councilmember Zachariah.
I guess just as a point of clarification, so when we enter this one-year contract, is this, we're waiting a year before we get a final answer as to the strategy that we would adopt? Or are they going to present over the year an ongoing strategy?
Yes, they would, after, they would present initial strategies after their initial assessment of the existing conditions. They would have some options for the city. Those options would be further refined after the community engagement process has completed. So it's combining what they believe could benefit the city of Madera based on their expertise and then combining that with what the public, what our writers are actually wanting, what could be in the best interest of the writers. So yes, there will be reports along the way.
And is there, is there a constraint to say that we're looking for the most affordable? So we, obviously, we're paying for transit at this time. We just awarded a contract. So is there an idea to say what's going to save the city money as well? Is it what's in the best interest of the city?
That is, cost effectiveness is one of, is something that we're looking to analyze with, as part of this feasibility study, yes. So we are looking for options to save the city money in public transportation.
And then lastly, just they're saying they like the working with locals. So is there, they're saying that they're going to favor more of a local industry response versus the Uber, Lyft kind of response other cities have done with their micro transit?
So they were really struggling serving small agencies. They happen to have a local presence in their community engagement. That's where their local presence is. But yes, they, they describe themselves as wanting to, or as assisting smaller agencies with some of these larger, larger city ideas, but adapting them to a smaller agency.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Zachariah. And just one comment. I would like to thank the company for doing the step-by-step timeframe. It really laid it out what we're going to be looking for. They're starting this fall and then come this spring to report to the council and give us a step-by-step of where they're at. So I appreciate that. It was very knowledge for me. Any other questions? If not, I open it up for public comment. I see none on Zoom or online.
We have none, Mayor.
Thank you, City Clerk Gonzalez. With that, I close public comment and bring it back to my colleagues for a motion.
To approve item D1?
Second.
A motion is second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed, motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Grants Manager Zuniga, for that report. I appreciate it. Moving on, next item.
Item D2, Schedule A Agreement with the California Department of Forestry and Fire Protection, CAL FIRE from July 1st, 2025 to June 30th, 2026, for fire service operations.
Thank you for that. And our very own Chief McCombe will be here presenting tonight.
After my IT help here.
Thank you, Alicia, Mayor, members of the council, Justin McCombe, Assistant Chief for Madera City Fire Department. This item is a follow-up from an item I presented a couple of weeks ago. Essentially, just a heads up that I will be bringing this, this one-year agreement back to you. So this is the official agreement that I'm going to present for, for next fiscal year. This year, it's, it's always a one-year agreement that the city has done with CAL FIRE, so this is no change. But this, this agreement is for $7,45,082. The agreement covers 23 firefighters. That means captains and engineers at the facilities of Station 56, 57, and 58. In addition, two battalion chiefs, one of them is in the crowd with Chief McCarron, and the other one is Chief Garcia, who you all know. This is a breakdown of our personnel at each station. So you'll see that we have three firefighters on duty at each station per day. And to the right is our list of equipment. I will add that some of the equipment on our front lines, but we will be looking at replacing some of our reserves in the next coming years due to just the aging out process. So the model going forward is going to be similar to the new Engine 57 that you've seen. So we're going to continue that model and that color design, which, which is a big hit. This is just a comparison of the previous years. You can see at the top in yellow the amount I'm bringing to you. I think what I want to point out on this chart is historically, we do come in below this number. This number that I give you is, it comes from Sacramento through Co-op Fire. Typically, we come under, and that's the intent, right? So we'll continue that. In addition to that, some of these, these numbers of, you know, when we close out, it depends on fire seasons truly because, for example, during the Palisades and Eaton Fire, we sent two city employees to assist. So once they leave, the state picks up their salaries for the amount of time that they're gone. Plus, the individual working behind them overtime is paid by the state. So that's why you kind of see these trends of the up and downs depending on how busy the fire season is. Last year was a, was a, it was a one-off because we had a staff benefit rate decrease. That's why our figure came in a little bit lower. This year, it's back up to, to the normal trend. And then we estimate an escalator of usually about 5% each year of an increase. But we're also, I spoke about this previous two weeks ago, is we're reclassifying three of those firefighter two positions and going to the model of all fire captains and all engineers. And that just gives us depth. I've talked about the firefighter two position just being a revolving door. So the individuals come, they don't learn the city, they don't, you know, they basically come for a few months, then they promote or they leave, and then we have to wait to backfill and it's overtime and all kinds of other issues. So with the engineers and captain model, everybody drives, everybody can be an incident commander on an incident, and it just gives us a lot of depth there. This just goes a little bit deeper in here. They come, the engineers come with, with training from our CAL FIRE Academy. They can drive code three, command the incidents, they're trained to pump, and they have a minimum of a two-year commitment. This chart shows just the change highlighted in red. We're going from 13 engineers to 16 this upcoming agreement, and that will eliminate all of our firefighter two positions in the city. This chart is our trend. We've broke it down from 2021 all the way to 2024. I would focus on 2024 in the red line. That's total calls. We are increasing our calls every year. So this year is the first time we are over 5,000 calls for service. This breaks down by station. So you see Station 56 in yellow. Typically, that is your busiest fire station in the city. And with their medical calls, they are, they are extremely busy. One thing I was going to add, just if you're not aware, on Monday, this event didn't happen in the city of Madera, but this was in the county. So we had a fire that started in the river. It was just on the county line side or the county side. And I guess what I'm trying to explain is just the sheer search capacity of what CAL FIRE can bring to a contract. I'm lucky enough to oversee the city plus the county, plus all the state resources within Madera County. So that event happened at the, the peak of it, we had seven, seven engines, two water tenders, various overhead. It was a super windy day. The firefighters were just challenged the entire time when one fired. And not to mention that the individual that was arrested for arson set fires on both sides of the river. So they had multiple fronts that they were trying to fight the entire time. We had two city engines committed to that fire the entire time. As CAL FIRE controls the command, or we have the command and control for the whole area, we were able to make sure that the city of Madera is not unstaffed. So essentially, what we do is we backfill with our partners from neighboring departments. So typically, we bring in, you know, we had, we brought in two Merced County fire engines to cover our back door while we were fighting that fire. We were teetering on a point where I was going to bring in CAL FIRE resources from the mountains and, but we ended up catching it. But I guess one of the things that, that I like is just the search capacity of CAL FIRE and the ability to have unlimited, I'll say, not unlimited, but enough resources to make sure that the city is not going to be short on resources. Also want to take a moment to thank the chief because his team was down in the river and it was a multi-agency effort to make sure that they were able to apprehend the arsonists and they, he was in court this morning at 10 o'clock. But I just want to, I didn't even realize the chief was down there helping out. So I just want to add that little piece to it and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you for that report. I will bring that back to my colleagues, Councilwoman Evans.
Thank you. What you don't understand, a lot of you, is I see them a lot because the river is my backyard. And I live in a manufactured home. And for many of you, you don't know, a home, the capacity that I live in can go up in five minutes. That means everything that we own is gone. One home that was in the, in my development went, and I mean, it took them like, what, 3.5 minutes? And by the time everybody got there, the house was gone. These men are out there fighting. I see them. I commend you guys because it's, it's devastating to watch. And I was terrified because I didn't know if it was going to run up the sides of the river and because of the cleaning from Public Works and everything, there's, this city is to be commended for. this city is to be commended for all that we have. I thank you. I thank the chief. I thank the parks. You guys do not even understand how devastating it is. So for me, anytime I see you, it's, it's my hat's off to you. And I thank you so much. And I'm so glad you caught him. I don't know if it's the same one from the other four, but you don't have to say anything right now. But it's, it's, there's been six fires in a week's time right there on the river. And it's right by my home as well as the seniors that I live. And to have the people that we have to come and work. There was a fire in the water heater. The gentleman was on hospice. And before they could get finished with that fire, they had to go around the corner because two more fires had broken out. City manager, everyone was there. But I thank you. I just want you to know I thank you. And you have my vote. I'm sorry.
For that comment, Mayor Prochim Rodriguez.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Gallegos. Chief McCombs, thanks again for your presentation. There is no doubt that the fire services are an essential part in our community and very much needed. I do have a question regarding, since you're 2019, 2020, you've realized the savings with the contract amount and the national expenses. Whatever we don't utilize, what does that roll over to? Is that something that comes back to the general fund? Maybe a question for our director or, and and last but not least tied to that is, how much of that? I know that we added staff soon after 2020. How much of that is Measure K funding? I mean, is there a percentage amount?
I'll try to answer both of those questions. I'll answer your first one first. For the record, Arnold Rodriguez, City Manager, unused funds for the Fire Department roll back into the general fund. So two-thirds of it goes back to the general fund, one-third of it goes back to Measure K. The general fund money then goes to the unassigned general fund account, and the Measure K funds go into the Measure K Fire Department account. If memory serves me, I'm going off the top of my head here from a few months back. I, I believe Measure K Fire Department fund balance is about $7.4 million. In terms of how we've been treating Measure K since my arrival, we, for the first couple of years of Measure K, we kept all of the money in in the Measure K Fire Department account. What we paid for that account, we paid for the construction of Fire Station 40, 58. We paid, total project cost was 9.4 million, if memory serves me. We borrowed approximately $4 million. So we paid about $5 million in cash, and that was through the Measure K account balance. Since we began staffing Station 58, we have taken a two-thirds, one-third approach. So two-thirds of the Fire Department, which historically has been Station 56 and 57, had come directly out of state, out of the general fund, whereas Station 58 is, has always come out of Measure K, and that's the Fire Department. In the past, in the current fiscal year that we're in, and in the proposed fiscal year, we have refined that. Where now we are paying for additional PG&E bills and for some of the computer equipment. Historically, the general fund has picked up a lot of that. In the current fiscal year, we've, well, we have, we've been allocating the one, the one-third, two-thirds model to electricity bills, to fuel, and to, and to operating expenses. We, we also created the fire equipment replacement fund, and that's how we purchased Engine 57, and that's coming out of Measure K. If it was not for Measure K, we would not be able to afford some of this equipment. And then most recently, in the current fiscal year, we, we also purchased a Skid steer with the masticator on it, and we purchased a tractor with a boom mower and a foil mower. The funds for those two pieces of equipment have come out of Measure K Fire. And the reason we did that is because that's how we've been cleaning the Fresno River, and that's how we've been able to try to mitigate a lot of the fires that have happened. So those fires, it's both, it's a, it's an aesthetic issue, it's a public safety issue, but primarily, it's a fire issue. When fires are happening in the Fresno River, they are very difficult to put out. And so we have bought two pieces of equipment that are dedicated to the Fresno River. One of those pieces of equipment, we deployed earlier this year, or this fiscal year. That's the Skid steer with the masticator. The, the tractor with the boom mower is in our shop right now. We just received it. That has not been deployed, and the reason for that is we're, we're adding some of the attachments. That's a long-winded response.
Well, it's a good response. Thank you, City Manager Rodriguez. So if I understood you correctly, it's two-thirds on the general fund, one-third for Measure K. Typically, is that how?
Yes, historically, that's been the case. But I do want to put, we are proposing in this year's budget, which you'll be hearing here shortly, when Finance Director Lima comes up, I think in the next item. We are proposing a slight modification this year. And the modification this year is that we, that we maintain the one-third, two-thirds model. So, so going back how we've been doing it for the past several years, we are proposing that one of the battalion chiefs' full salary comes out of the Measure K fund. The reason for that is the reason that the city came before this council and requested a second battalion chief position. The city historically had one battalion chief, was in response to Senate Bill 1205, which is commonly referred to as the Ghost Ship Fire Bill, and that, and that has mandatory inspections. Historically, the city's operated with, with one battalion chief. So we had one battalion chief for three days out of the seven days of the week, but the second battalion chief now recovered six of the seven days. If it was not for Measure K, we would not be able to afford it. And this year, as councils are aware, this upcoming year, I should say, starting July 1st, we, we are seeing our revenues stay flat. We've seen our expenses go up. And if it wasn't for Measure K, I can tell you candidly, it would be very difficult to pay for all of our expenses. And that's why staff is proposing, for the first time, to paying the second battalion chief position 100% out of the Fire Department Measure K. However, in terms of the, the captains and the engineers, we are proposing that we maintain the same model that we've had since inception, or since, since the opening of Station 58.
So if I hear you correctly, Arnoldo, you're saying that with the exception of this year, we would go outside to two-thirds only for that one battalion chief?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. And last but not least, on the, I know that it's too early, or we're almost finishing out the fiscal year, but we don't have an actual expense yet on 24, 25 to see, or are we near, nearly meeting that, that contracted amount? I mean, last year, I think we went over by 15,000, but are we
Yeah, we're coasting by. We're well under. I don't want to throw an inaccurate figure, but it'll be over $100,000, I believe, under.
At which point, that'll be rolled over, two-thirds, one-third type of deal? Okay, good. Well, I mean, and that's great. I mean, again, the testament that this community had placed before this council was the vote that they had Measure K because they knew that we needed public safety, fire being one of them. My only caution that I always have is when we start going beyond the two-thirds, one-thirds, and we're having to do more of the general fund, and it's time to look at our budget, you know, a little bit more cautiously and make sure we're good. Seems like we're still, we may be under budget this year. I understand the cost going up, obviously, like everything else, retirement, unfunded liabilities and what have you. But it's always good to keep a careful eye there. And it's a yearly deal. So we'll approve it this year, right? We'll come back next year, and we'll see where we're at. But thank you again, Chief McCombs. Appreciate all your time.
Thank you for that comment, Mayor Prochim Rodriguez. Chief McComb, if you could please send our appreciation behalf of the mayor and council to the men and women that serve this city, and our firefighters are truly appreciated by everything that they do. And I know it's not easy because it's, we take away from their family for several days and nights. And so it's, it's a sacrifice to serve the city. So we, we do acknowledge that. With that, I open it up for public comment. I see none. Anyone online or on Zoom?
We have none, Mayor.
Thank you, City Clerk Gonzalez. I will close public comment and bring it to my colleagues to adopt this resolution.
Motion to approve resolution is written.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes unanimously. Thank you, chief.
Thank you so much.
Moving on to the next item.
Section E Administrative Reports. Item E1 is a budget workshop for expenses.
That will be presented by our Financial Director Lima. Welcome.
Oh, hello.
Hello.
Let's see here. Let's see if I can mess, let's see if I can mess this up. It wouldn't take much.
As Mike is setting up, I was unaware he was sitting there. If not, I would have let him answer all those questions about the fire department.
Oh, no, you did a great job. Trust me. In fact, if you want to take this presentation, you're welcome to do it.
We really wanted to hear your long-winded answer. Thank you.
And just a point of clarification. A few minutes ago, I said that the Measure K Fire Department fund balance was 7.4. It's 7.252.
Thank you for that correction, City Manager Rodriguez.
We may have to rescind that vote.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Mike Lima, Director of Financial Services. It's my pleasure tonight to talk to you about the fiscal year 25, 26 budget. This time talking about expenditures. A week ago, we had the, the very good conversation about the revenues. And so tonight, it's the other side of the coin, the expense side. There's more people here tonight than there was last week. It's kind of pressures on. So anyhow, okay. So staff is putting the finishing touches on the 25, 26 budget for council consideration. I literally got a copy of the book an hour ago. So we're real close. We're very close here. This presentation is going to look at fiscal year 24, 25 expenses, how the general fund is doing, and then also some other expenses when compared to budget. And we'll conclude with some of the highlights that are going to be in the 25, 26 budget. So let's look at 24, 25. I know we've talked about it a couple of times, but I'll just kind of give you an update. 24, 25 adopted general fund appropriations were $42.6 million. Broken down, personnel costs, $24 million, operations, 13.3. Interdepartmental charges, 2.9, capital debt, half a million, transfers out, $1.9 million. That's what you adopted back in August of last year. During the fiscal year, we've added another 200,000 of amendments to the budget. So the amended budget is $42.8 million in the general fund. This kind of gives you a picture of it. So you see the 42.8 in the 24, 25 amended column. Right now, as of activity through the end of May, we're projecting we're going to end up at 41.2 million of expenses. So we're under budget by $1.6 billion. But that is still a 2.7% growth from the actuals of the previous year. So expenses are going up in the year, even though we finished under budget. This is a breakdown by department. So still the same totals, but instead of looking at it by categories, you're looking at it by departments. Really, you know, you can see from the percentages, there's been some growth in some areas, in several of them. But a reduction in fire, congratulations. Fire expenses are down, as well as police. So public safety, which is the biggest part of our budget, is actually the one that is coming in under budget this year. So continuing on. So what does this mean? As I said, we're coming in about 1.6 billion under amended budget. The savings between budget and national is a combination of unexpended personnel appropriations, meaning salary savings from vacant positions, as well as lower anticipated expenditures on contracted services. So we didn't spend as much contracting out. So you might, I'm sure all you remember last week, I said revenues are going to be 800,000 under our budget, but our expenses are 1,006 under budget. So at the end of the day, we're going to put 800,000 into the bank is what I'm projecting right now. And I know all of you pay very close attention to what I say, and I do appreciate it. Back in April, when I gave you a mid-year report, I said it was going to be 500,000. So it's actually improved slightly over the last two months, our financial condition. Instead of putting 500,000 in the bank, we're going to put 800,000. That's what I'm projecting right now. So things have gotten a little better as the year has gone on. All right, now what everyone wants to hear. They don't want to hear about history. They want to hear what's going to happen next year. And next year is the, we have a total city budget of $221.8 million. That's up 6.7 million or 3.1% from the 24, 25's adopted budget of 216.1. Again, for the second or third year in a row, we have set a record. It is the largest budget in the city's history. The growth is primarily due to a large capital program, as usual. Capital is the big, the biggest driver in the budget and of this total budget, and it is again this year. General Fund's budget is also increasing at a slower rate, though. Now, it's not going up by 3.1%. It's going up by 2.1% from 42.8 million to 43.7. This is what it looks like. So I'm comparing amended versus our proposed. We are going to go from 42.8 to 43.7. Personnel costs rising 4.6%, going up 1.1 million. Operation costs are going up about 600,000 or 4.4%. Interdepartmental charges are going up 600,000 or 20.7%. We are greatly reducing our capital and debt, going down 80% or $400,000. And our transfers out are dropping by a million or 52%. Why are these numbers moving? What's going on? Well, the rise in personnel costs is due to basically three factors. Workers' comp is up almost 27%, $307,000. That's just in the general fund. Unfunded pension liability, this is what the CALpers bills us for the liability that they have throughout the system. It's going up 8.3% or 243,000. Health insurance, 15.2% increase, up $473,000. So you add those up, you know, that's basically a million dollars right there of just those three benefit costs that are driving. So when you're looking at, is it salaries? It's not salaries. It's the benefit costs that are really driving the personnel costs rising. Operational costs are increasing by, the biggest, or the biggest factor causing it is a new 10 by 10 street paving program that we're recommending for approval with this budget. That's $526,000. I will get into that in more detail a little later in the presentation. And finally, the growth in interdepartmental charges is due to about a $400,000 increase in fleet replacement charges caused by the electrification of our fleet. By that, what I mean is, we have to, we can no longer buy gasoline-powered vehicles. We have to buy electric vehicles. We have to start replacing that in our fleet. And electric vehicles are just more expensive than gas-powered vehicles. That's just reality. So we are having to collect some of that money now in order to be able to replace these vehicles a few years from now. The decrease in transfers out is due to the elimination of some one-time grant match payments, as well as a significant reduction in the amount of subsidy made to the landscape maintenance zones. This year's budget, the 24, 25 budget, has over $100,000 of subsidy to the landscape maintenance zones to fix negative fund balances. Next year, it's about $1,000. So a lot less. But there's a caveat to that. But I'll tell you that caveat next week because I want to keep you coming back for more. There are $43.7 million of appropriations in the general fund in total. As you probably remember from last week, I said there's 42.3 million of revenue. So we need to use 1.4 million of unrestricted general fund carryover to balance the general fund. The unrestricted carryover is going to be used on one-time expenses. It's not going to be used for ongoing, but we do need to use a million for. We are not, I want to emphasize, not proposing to use the emergency reserve account. Rather, we are using unreserved fund balance, which is a carryover of funds from previous years. So it would, as I mentioned, it'd be for one-time expenses, mainly capital improvements to city facilities, except for 375,000 for housing element compliance. This is a state mandate. The city is expected to retain a consultant to assist with preparing it. And this mandate, or this element has to be prepared every eight years. So it's basically a one-time expense that we, and we won't incur it again for another eight years after that. This carryover is also going to be used to fund our contribution to the city's deferred maintenance program. You might remember in this year's budget, we set up a deferred maintenance fund to deal with some of these big capital expenses that we've not put money away for in the past. This budget has a transfer to pay for some of that out of this unreserved fund balance. So let's look at the enterprise funds. Again, I wanted to direct your attention to the amended budget versus the proposed. Water going up about $5 million. Again, mostly capital. Sewer is actually going down substantially, almost 13 million. Again, again, capital-driven, I'll get into that in a little bit. Solid waste is going up about a million. Solid waste is going up about a million. The airport is going up almost two million dollars. Again, capital program that's causing that. And the golf course is staying flat, but I wanted to bring it up anyway. We're not reducing it. We're actually, there's a very small increase in there, and I will get to that in a little bit. So improvements included in the budget are funds for the deferred maintenance program, again, one time, some new equipment, the ten by ten street paving program, continuance of the sidewalk replacement program, some police department improvements, one time, some one time park improvements, a water well maintenance program, which is new, as well as a new program for wastewater treatment plant maintenance. Our deferred maintenance program, and just as a recap, in in this current fiscal year, twenty four, twenty five, you approved that that program allocated three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It was to be spent on door replacement at Pan Am Center, HVAC replacement at the police headquarters, HVAC replacement, Fire Station fifty seven, some money for city hall exterior enhancements, and two hundred thousand set aside for a complete roof replacement at the corporation yard. Estimates are, it's a million dollars to do that. So we're putting away two hundred thousand a year for five years. We did that in year one. And low and behold, it's in the budget for this coming year, too. We are proposing that to use six hundred and fifty thousand of unrestricted general fund balance to help pay for the deferred maintenance program. Again, two hundred thousand of that will go to the roof replacement and then four hundred and fifty thousand for other projects that are there. So we're going to cover some of these in the upcoming, in these upcoming slides. The equipment I mentioned, so in the budget, you'll find seventy thousand dollars for purchase of seven pole cameras. This is being paid for by Police Measure K. We are also proposing the purchase of two lighted message boards and a light tower. So these would be the, as you're driving, you see the sign, it says detour here. There would also be the big lights so people could work in the evenings or, you know, in particularly in the winter time when it gets dark earlier. They would be able to work out outdoors. We're looking to buy some of those. So this is being paid for by a combination of general fund, water fund, sewer fund, and supplemental law enforcement monies. The idea behind the multiple funding sources is that all those units, police, water, sewer, and the general fund, particularly streets, will use it, so therefore they're going to contribute to it. The ten by ten street program, five hundred and twenty six thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars. It's a pilot program for our streets unit. We are going to be contracted with a private company to do road repairs that are too extensive for standard pothole repair, but not large enough to qualify for the CIP. We are taking two hundred nineteen thousand, forty one dollars of our unrestricted carryover from the general fund to use this, and the balance is coming from Measure T funds. The sidewalk program, as I mentioned, is included in the budget. We've got a hundred and twenty five thousand for Measure T and about two hundred and twenty five thousand from CDBG, which is pending final approval by you. Police facilities in this budget include a kitchen remodel of a hundred thousand, lobby improvements of two hundred thousand, and annex improvements of a hundred thousand. All these are being paid with Police Measure K money. Parks facilities improvements, we have the Lions Town and Country Park batting cages, ninety six thousand dollars. The McNally Park sand pit volleyball court of ten thousand and Sunrise Sports complex goalpost replacement, also ten thousand dollars. I've teased the deferred maintenance fund quite a bit. We have several things that we're planning to purchase out of there. Two more air conditioning units at the police department. We are going to seal the gym floor at John Well Center. We're going to repair the roof at John Well Center. We're also going to replace the door on finance for the utility billing area so that it is an automatic opener. You press a button and it opens. We're going to go with that. And then we're putting aside two hundred thousand for the Public Works complex. Our water well maintenance program, getting into the enterprise funds here, we have twenty water wells, eighteen of which are operational right now. Budget includes a new water well maintenance program to address maintenance issues and the rehab of wells. Hundred and eighty thousand is being set aside in the water fund for this new program, which will establish new preventive protocols, rehab efforts, and on call repair services. So we're basically going to issue an RFP, and we're going to contract with a water well company that they be able to come out and provide these maintenance services as well as emergency repairs. There's some very big dollar amounts in the water capital program this year. The key projects, Yosemite Avenue Water Main Replacement, five point seven million dollars. General Pipeline Replacement, five point three million. Water Meter Installation, three million. Waterwell thirty seven Pump Installation, two point eight million dollars. Water Storage Tank, two point six million, which I believe is just design money. Yes, I'm getting the nod. Okay, good. And various Water Main Upgrades of two point four million. On the wastewater side, as you know, we have a wastewater treatment plant. It requires a lot of maintenance. It's also an older plant, so there, that adds to the maintenance requirements on the facility. Eight hundred and seventy eight thousand dollars is being set aside in the sewer fund for this new operational program to address maintenance needs, including pump and valve replacements, control system upgrades, heat exchanger servicing, digester sensor updates, rebuilding of gearboxes, and other expenses, other repairs. Staff is in the process of preparing a five year maintenance program, and this budget will cover those items in year one of that maintenance program. Some key projects in sewer outside of that, we have the Shnor Avenue Trunk Rehab, which is one point one million. Wastewater Treatment Plant Headworks and Pipeline Lining Project of one point two million. Avenue thirteen Sewer Trunk Main Rehab of a million, and the Sewer Main Video Inspection of seven hundred thousand dollars. On Airport and Golf Course Airport, we have one big project happening, the Apron and Taxi Lane Rehab, one point six million dollars. Again, ninety percent of that is paid by the feds. Five percent is paid by the state, so our net share is only five percent of that one point six million dollars. We really leverage the federal and state dollars very effectively in order to get these big projects done. Three hundred thousand is for the airport layout plan and two hundred and about two hundred and fifty thousand is for the terminal reroof. Golf Course Capital is proposed at a hundred and twenty six thousand, one fifty two. That's ten thousand dollars higher than fiscal year twenty four, twenty five Golf Course capital appropriations. As I mentioned, we're seeing an uptick in in the green fees, which means there's more people playing out there. More people playing means more money for capital. And that's it. That's your preview. And you've got to come back for the rest of it next week to find out. So our plan is to come back next week with a full budget and for your consideration, and hopefully for your approval. Do you have any questions? I'd be glad to answer them at this time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Financial Director Lima. We do have a question by Mayor Pro Tim Rodriguez.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Gagos, and thank you again, Director Lima. Appreciate the presentation. It's always exciting. You keep us in suspense. The, the one point four million dollars, just to clarify, had it not been for the one time use of these unrestricted fund balance, we would have a balanced budget.
That's correct. Yeah, we, we made other trim, trimming and cuts in the general fund to squeeze it in. But yes, we still needed a million four to get some of these key programs in place, the key one time programs. And so that's what we did. But yes, if it weren't for those, we would have had a balanced budget.
Perfect. So if I understood you correctly, so that we don't dip on the reserve balance or the emergency fund, we're taking this from savings that we made throughout the year? The unrestricted fund, or are we taking it from unrestricted funds we've had over the course of the years?
It would be unrestricted funds we've had over the course of several years. If you look in the act for specifically page fifteen, not that I memorized it, but it's page fifteen.
I was going to ask you that question.
It, you will see unrestricted fund balance there of about, I believe, twelve point nine million. And that is what we are taking this money from.
Okay. So again, just reiterating, this is a one time, so we know that this won't be a recurring expense. Next year, we'll have, we'll present a different different outlook as far as if we have a deficit or not. But had it not been for the one point four, because we need a lot of this deferred maintenance and these investments that we're doing in capital, obviously that puts us at that one point four million deficit.
That's correct. Yes.
Got it. Thank you. And much needed, I did see the improvements that we're doing, not only in all of our assets that we own in buildings from Public Works to police to golf, but it's great that we're starting to invest and maybe start putting money aside for any depreciation accounts that we need in the future. So thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you for that comment, Mayor Pro Tim Rodriguez. That is just your report. Thank you, Financial Director Lima. You have your direction. We can't wait to see you at our next meeting with updates.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Oh, open up a public comment, excuse me, at this time, anybody in the house? If not, anybody online or on Zoom?
We have none, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, with that, I close public comment, and we move on to our next item.
Item E two is Presentation of Capital Improvement Program CIP for fiscal year two thousand twenty five, twenty six to fiscal year two thousand twenty nine, two thousand thirty.
And that will be presented by our staff members, but we will start engineering helmers.
That's right. Thank you, Mayor, council members. I just loaded this up. Feels like, feels like Finance Director Lima took most, a good part of our presentation there towards the ends, but still a lot of good stuff.
Your thunder, but you'll bring it back.
Did I get it? That was pure luck.
No, I didn't get it. Bad luck.
It's not showing on Zoom. This is yours? Or is that?
That looks like ours.
It's yours.
Thank you. Okay. We're going to start into this. This is our capital improvement program presentation for twenty five, twenty six through twenty nine, thirty. Little bit of presentation overview, was a capital improvement program. Highlighted CIP project activity from the past year. It provides an overview of the twenty twenty five through twenty nine, thirty Capital Improvement Program, also known as CIP, and some of the changes in the document. It'll introduce new projects added to the CIP and review key project schedule for fiscal year twenty five, twenty six. And at the end, we'll receive input and direction. The capital improvement program. Document to identify capital improvement projects and coordinate the financing and timing of the projects. The CIP covers a role in five year period for purposes of allocating resources to priority projects and those with specific deadlines. Public input is received year round from various departments. We do seem to get fairly consistent input on that. CIP funding is annually appropriate, coinciding with the city budget process. The draft CIP with council approval will be submitted to the Planning Commission for Review and define CIP in accordance with the general plan. This is a requirement of a government code. The CIP project selection process. The guiding documents, but these are, these are three documents. And in reality, we probably have a number of others that we, that we rely upon. Impact fee programs, the utility master plans, the water sanitary sewer and storm brain. Special studies such as the downtown master plan, which did result in the Yosemite Avenue Road Diet. Staff review of current needs and available new funding sources, needs related to progressive growth. Internal discussions on priorities, schedules and funding, maintenance and other requests, needs identified through public outreach and risk assessments. Highlights of the twenty four, twenty four, twenty five CIP. Over forty million dollars was expended or encumbered last year. Actually, this year still. That's largely tied to the American Rescue Plan, ARPA. Those funds went into multiple projects. Avenue thirteen Sewer Interceptor Emergency Repairs and Rehabilitation, the Wastewater Treatment Plant Project, Fairgrounds Lift Station, Water Meters, Engineering Contract for Final Design of the New Water Storage Tank and the New Water Well on Granada. For twenty twenty four, twenty five record year, it was a record year. Significant projects that were advanced include the intersection improvements at Olive Avenue and Knox Street. The traffic signals will be installed later this year. Right now, when you're out there, you'll see cones at all four corners. Those cones are out there to go ahead and make certain that people don't trip over them. The signal at Lake and Sherwood, that will be coming later in the year as well. Most of the flat work has been done. Affordable housing communities grant, two point five million dollars in sidewalks. Bicycle lanes funded with the, again, with the HSC and D Street Pavement Rehab funded with SB one, RMRA. The financial contribution to Caltrans Downtown Road Diet Project, that was three million dollars. That was council approved of that, I think it was two years ago now. And this is just a breakdown of where the various projects, where the monies were spent. The wastewater treatment plant, twenty six percent, water projects, fifteen, sewer forty three streets, fifteen, and then other one percent. With that, Alan Bitter will be taking it from here.
Thank you, Keith. Before I move into this upcoming year, I would like to acknowledge our team that's here. These are the project managers that delivered that forty million dollars worth of projects. The, who's not here is our construction, oh, Frank's here, part of our construction management team. They kept us safe, kept these projects on time and on budget, and we're even down an inspector right now. So they are running. Oh, good. PD's not here, but they're going from project to project pretty quickly. So again, yeah, I'll present the projects that are proposed in this upcoming year. Mike did, Finance Director Lima did discuss a few of them, and I, we've got a few others to cover. So some of the changes you'll note in this year's document is that we are mirroring more of a budget document. So in past years, we would present planned expenditures, which means maybe we awarded a project late in the year. We encumber it with a PO, but then we don't actually spend the funds until the following year. You would have seen that in the CIP document. But this year, those funds that have been encumbered, they're staying in the year that they were encumbered. So you won't see them in the CIP, but that doesn't mean that we're not doing those projects anymore. They just don't show up in the CIP as, as a dollar value for that construction. Example was the Fairgrounds Lift Station. We have a PO in place for two million, just because of the long lead time on equipment, we're not going to see construction out there for several more months. You will see support costs, our staff time, testing costs, those will be in the budget. Another change is that police and fire capital improvements have now been incorporated into their department budgets in the, in the finance budget book. So Mike, Director Lima did discuss several of their projects, so they're not in the CIP book this year either. This year, we have sixty eight million, five hundred thousand planned in capital expenditures. We like to think that they'll all get delivered. We're on a good roll. But it's hard to really tell which ones are gonna maybe not make the cut because things happen during the year. So we do feel it's best to keep them budgeted so we're able to transition as needed based on if there's any emergencies that we need to deal with or changes in priorities or other deadlines that come up. But of that sixty five, sixty eight point five million, eleven million are new projects. We are carrying over, over fifty six million. We're catching up slowly. Also, within that sixty eight point five million, fifty two point six is for construction related costs. So some of these are shelf ready, ready to go. And or we're anticipating them going out to bid and being awarded next year. And then fifteen point nine million is for the engineering phase, or maybe they're for studies or certain safety plans that we've gotten grants for that we're moving forward. There are only six projects, I think, new projects added this year, but we do want to discuss them because that's what you're recommending approval and forwarding it to the Planning Commission for. The first one is the airports Apron A two and Taxi Lane Rehab. I know that was discussed in the earlier presentation. Just here is a little more information about the location of those improvements within the airport boundaries. Next, we have Tozer Park, which will be covered when Parks presents their projects. We received a grant from the Active Transportation Program, and so that project has been added to the CIP. It is seven points, four million, almost seven point five million for safety improvements around all of our elementary and, and secondary schools. You can see we targeted as many as we could, and it's going to be, it's small improvements that add up to big impact for. it's small improvements that add up to big impact for safety. So the first year is going to be the engineering and then hopefully the following year or the year after, depending upon if we're ready, then it'll go into construction. We also received a grant for Pine Street sidewalk improvements. It's similar to a CMAC grant, and this is to install missing sidewalk on Pine Street, south from Sunset Avenue towards Forest Street. We also received a rail crossing elimination from the Federal Rail Authority to study our favorite Hallelujah intersection and some other at-grade crossings. So we received one point six million in funding, four hundred thousand required matching funds. And so right now, our current efforts are in, well, we don't have our grant agreement signed yet, so our our costs are not reimbursable, but once it is, we will be going out with an RFP for a consultant to assist in this feasibility study. And again, it's not only the Cleveland Gateway Country Club intersection, but it is numerous of our at-grade crossings, so they can look at potential safety enhancements. And having this plan in place makes us very competitive for other grant funding that might come. We always have a new RMRA, which is gas tax-funded street project, and we are bringing a list of streets at your next council meeting for recommendation, but it is included in the budget. And then we also received an H tip grant for improvements to the signalized intersection at Ellis Avenue and Country Club or Road twenty six. If you are familiar with that, we recently annexed that intersection. But it has been an issue because there are no protected left turns for eastbound or westbound on Ellis. And so this project will allow us to widen the intersection, provide the turn lanes, and we'll modify the traffic signal so that we can get protected left turn phasing and and then regular straight-through movements, and it'll be a more traditional intersection. In the interim, I do understand our public works is making some modifications that might result in splitting the eastbound and the westbound phases, so they, you aren't having to punch it to make that left turn when you need to. May lead to some delays at the intersection, but that might outweigh some of the problems that are currently occurring there. Okay, that was our new projects, and I'll turn it over to the Parks Department.
I'll just take a minute to let my colleagues know, if you have any questions before the next presenter comes up, you're welcome to entertain those questions, and I just have one. Deputy Engineer Better, did we receive the six, one point six million dollars? Did city receive that money already for the railroad grant?
It, it will be available after the agreement is approved, and I believe it's on a reimbursement basis, so we will submit invoices based on the costs we incur.
Got it. Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim Rodriguez has a question.
Yes, I didn't see this as part of your improvements, but it was brought to our attention last time. It's been brought to our attention several times regarding. I know we talk about Alice, but also Tamperan being a very highly trafficked area that may require some type of a safety light. I'm not sure if there's some type of signal light at some point. But that may be something that we want to throw on there. I'm not sure how much of a priority. Does that, is that within our jurisdiction after annexation? Is that Seal County? Is that Unified, but that Tamperan seems to be an issue alongside a Matilda Torres.
I'm going to attempt to respond to that, and then I may hand it back over to Keith and Ellen. So the county in partnership with the school district and the city, we applied for a grant. We were not successful in obtaining that grant. We are going after a second grant now in partnership with the school district in the county. However, very similar to the intersection of Alice and Country Club that Ellen just spoke about. We do have a long-term plan for that intersection, but we do want to make some temporary improvements before the new school year starts. The same goes for a crosswalk at Country Club in Tamperan. So the plan right now, we met with Madera Unified School District a couple of weeks ago. The school district's going to be purchasing some alighted sidewalk where you would push the button and it would begin to flash yellow. On poles, very similar to what you see, for example, on Olive Avenue, next to the Planet Fitness, we will be installing those. The school district's going to be purchasing the equipment. City staff is going to be installing it. It's a temporary solution until we can put something a bit more comprehensive at that intersection. We plan on having that installed before the start of the school year, which is August the seventh. That's, that's our game plan. My understanding is the school district may have already ordered the equipment or they're about to, and our city staff has been working with their team to try to get that ready. So the goal is to make both of those improvements prior to the start of the school year. We know those are challenging areas, and there's a lot of community frustration, and I think we've all heard about it. And going back to, I think the mayor, maybe you, Councilmember Rodriguez stated, we annexed that area not too long ago. So until about a little over a year ago, that was in the county. And now that it's part of the city, we're trying to make some adjustments. Budget and timing are always the issue, but it, but before the school year starts, we are trying to make some, I'll say interim improvements.
Yeah, and I only say that because while you have some of the construction taking place now for the improvements done by the the development, the arc on the, and I'm not sure, I mean, you have it out. Might as well fix it if it's out there, right? It seems like the construction is alongside that same Tamperan, or maybe south of that.
You're right, it is in the same area. I'll get with our team, including Keith and Ellen, and I'll see if there's if we could do something while they're out there, because there's a lot of construction right now in the median island. You're absolutely correct.
Just I don't know if there's a cost savings there when you do that. Thank you. Thank you again, Ellen.
I'd like to thank our city manager to meet with the school district. I did meet with trustees before Matilla Torres was built and said, you need to get with the county and really think about a signal light or some safety issues because the kids will be crossing. I just wish that we could look ahead and be preventive and and taken care of it before that school was built, but I couldn't get any movement from the district or the county, and now the city is having to pick up that burden. So thank you for having that conversation and those partnerships with our other partners. I do appreciate that. Thank you, Deputy Director Bitter. I appreciate it. And our Parks Director.
Hi there. Thought I wasn't going to speak tonight, didn't you? Anyway, I tried to pay them to do my slides. I don't know what, they didn't accept my bribe, but they figured this was last on the agenda, so it was appropriate for me to speak. Anyway, this is the Parks and Community Services portion of the CIP presentation. Our, as Ellen mentioned, these are projects that are funded. They're just not pie in the sky, and I think these projects, you've seen me up here before talking about them in the past, so they should be very familiar to you. The first one is James Talbot Park, which is for one point nine million dollars. It's a Prop sixty eight statewide park development and community revitalization program. This, this will be a new park with amenities such as playground area, half basketball court, table tennis courts, landscaping and safety perimeter fencing. One of the things I do want to mention, I actually gave us talk this morning to one of the service clubs, and I was talking about this park, and I just want, since we have people here for once, I just want to say this is a kind of a vanity project for us. We want to make this more of an iconic park in the city. You can see it has vibrant colors. We want to make it look a little different than what the other parks look like. So again, we, you know, this, we have a good line of sight on getting this done. This is, we've actually going to go out for a rebid on this to kind of adjust the funding requirements, so we can stay within our allotted funding. But again, this is a project that we're looking forward to completing this year. The second one is the Town and Country Connectivity Project. This is, we've got state funding of one point six million dollars. If you recall, we had a nice little ceremony in front of the city hall with Assemblywoman Soria and Senator Caballero. So again, this is one that we're, we're looking forward to getting done. I know this is near and dear to Councilman Rodriguez's heart because I think one of our first conversations, I think you brought this up to me about getting this done. So we're, we're close on this. This is, we're having a little, little bit of, we've got some bids in, but there's some some appeals going on between the, the two lowest bidders, but we hopefully have that worked out within the next few weeks. I'm looking forward to having, to breaking ground on this probably sometime within the next six to eight weeks. So look forward to some exciting things happen with this, this project. Then the next one is Tozer Park, and I think Ellen mentioned this one as well. This one is actually, we're going through the design contract right now, but it's for one point three million dollars. And the project description on this is, again, we have amenities like we have before, playground area, basketball court, used soccer field, but I'm pausing here because this, we hope this will be the first pickleball court in the city. There isn't one now. I know we don't have any tennis courts to use as pickleball courts, but that's really the plan right now for this, this one, this gets done. We're going, we've actually got a nice design company that we're working with, and so we're just working through the Ts and Cs of the, the agreement with that. So I think that's the end of us. Sure is. So they got me up here anyway. So there you go.
Hold on, Parks Director Abir. We have a question. Don't go too far. Mayor Pro Tim Rodriguez.
Thank you. And again, thank you, Mayor Director Abir. You caught me with the pickleball. One, you, you mentioned that we don't have tennis courts. We do have tennis courts, but unfortunately, they're not within the city limits. They're actually part of the school.
Yeah.
And if we could somehow develop a partnership or relationship that's been brought to my attention, why can't we utilize the courts at Madera High? I, I tend, I walk to Thomas Jefferson, they have the painted pickleball alongside your tennis courts, but again, nobody knows that there's access to that. Don't know if there is access, but that would be a great partnership. There's taxpayers here pay for those bombs. There's no reason why we shouldn't be able to work in partnership to utilize some of the green space and to utilize some of their courts to the public. And I think it's important that we establish some relationship or partnership in the future because I think we're overlapping in the same type of facilities that we already have and we pay for. So I, I think it's important if we can maybe develop that relationship if it's a matter of who opens, who closes. I know there's always been a concern where people go in there, they vandalize. Obviously, the school has to protect its property, so when they close it, then nobody has access to it, but that would be great. And thank you again, because that is something of a trend that pickleball is becoming. People want something to do outside, and I think Tozer Park will certainly achieve that goal. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Parks Director Abir for that presentation.
I'm just going to step in to introduce our next presenter, Marcella Zuniga for Transit, and that should be it for our guest speakers.
Good evening again. Just have a few slides for Transit. Our first one is the Trans One, the Transit Center Enhancement Project. We are moving along in this particular project. This includes the renovation of the Intermodal facility on East Street. That is, I'm sorry, it's canopy. I saw Transit Enhancement. Let me start over. I do apologize. Canopy. This is over at our transit facility over by Madera High South Campus. We are working on installing a canopy at one of the doors. It's to help protect against the elements throughout the year. We have almost completed, we've completed the design stage. We went back out. We're doing some redesigns because we wanted to make sure that it's matching the roofing and whatnot that's out there right now, so that's been a little bit of a delay, but we do intend on moving this forward this coming year. Now to the Transit Development, I'm sorry, Trans ten. This is the, these are the enhancements and the renovation over at the Intermodal Facility. This in large part is being funded by the Affordable Housing and Sustainability Grant. That particular grant is allowing for the purchases of transit passes will facilitate, even though we have very minimal fees for public transit as we move forward, and depending on the outcome of the feasibility study, there may be costs, but this particular grant allows us the opportunity to in essence, purchase passes to provide out to the community so that they can use our, our public transit services. Other funding sources include the FTA, State of Good Repair, Measure T, and the local transit fund. We are making movement. We are actually, the designs are in building and we're finishing up the permit, the permit process right now to move forward in the renovation with the, at the building. Trans eleven, this one's kind of remaining still. We, it's still there, the money's still there, but we are waiting to see exactly what type of infrastructure we will be, we will need in our community. And again, this is also tied back to our feasibility study and determining what infrastructure do we really need. So once we can finalize that, we will be able to move forward and start planning the use of the, of the CMAC funding for the purchasing of electric bus and the infrastructure. And then the last one is a Trans twelve bus shelter relocation project. This project, we have almost completed the design phase of it. This project came about as a result of the transit plan. With the opening of new stops, we have existing shelters that those stops are no longer active, but the shelter is in good, they are, they're new. They're one of our newer ones. So we want to move those two locations to our new bus stop locations that do not have shelters. So there is a total of twenty eight bus shelters, twenty five of which will be relocated, three are older ones, we will dispose of those. And this project costs is four hundred thousand, and it is being paid for with State of Good Repair and Measure T monies.
Hey, do I have any questions for my colleagues?
Oh, don't go too far.
This, if that was the last presenter, the question would be for our deputy
Okay.
Director, I just have a question regarding the sixty eight point five million dollars that we have for these proposed projects. Of that, how many projects do we see? You said shelf-ready. How many of those projects can we see completing here within the next? Because obviously our capital improvement, we have a five-year outlook on these projects. I mean, what, what's our, our probability of completing all projects within that timeframe?
So if you don't mind, I'll, I'll go on to the next slide because I, I touched on that briefly. Back, no, current slide. So we have of the sixty eight million, there's twenty eight projects that are slated for construction, so that gets it down to a bit better number. How many will move to construction? You know, we have a history of carryover, so it, we are driven by deadlines. We're driven by timing, such as the Water Main Project in Yosemite has to be in before they do the CAPM and the Road Diet Project. So those priorities are going to drive the delivery. And so it's kind of hard to predict how many, but we had, I'm trying to remember how many we awarded last year. I don't have that number off the top of my head, but it is our goal to strive, and when we are scheduling our resources, we're trying to get them all done. These, these are slated for this year, so it's not over the five years. These would be this year if they were all completed. They're all budgeted.
Well, thank you, Ellen. Appreciate that. The reason why I bring that up is I know that a lot of these projects come from different buckets, you know, certain enterprise funds and what have you. And I don't know, I mean, with priorities that we have for projects that are shelf-ready and funding available, maybe lacking some funding for the following year from a certain bucket that we typically get. Do we ever consider saying, hey, let's shift all of the priority to these projects that I know we can get done within a year and get them done versus continue to leave them rolling, 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 and at times they don't fill the five years. We have to either find another source of funding by that time, inflation costs, construction costs, everything. Maybe a third more in funding that we have to find to be able to satisfy that project. So just wondering, you know, what is the completion probability? Is it eighty percent that we'll finish all those within the next five? Five years? Is it seventy percent? And again, that's not something that I'm asking you to answer. I'm just thinking out loud that priorities should be shifted on those that are ready and we can get done with that projected amount of time.
Sure, and one thing that is kind of the good news, bad news scenario, we've been really successful in applying for and receiving grants, and sometimes that bumps projects as well, preparing the grants or when we receive them and they've got deadlines, then they kind of jump in front of some other projects that may not, but well, yeah, we certainly hopefully intend to complete these within five years. It's just how many will get done this year.
Of course, and a prime example, I think Director Abir brought it up. I mean, I've been advocating for Town and Country years now. I think I'm going on a second term now, trying to advocate for that, and, and I understand that it's not easy to do because there's I don't know if there's environmentals, I don't know if there's funding issues, obviously. It's good to have this list of priorities, but if there's no funding attached to it, then we can't do it. to it, then we can't do it. And when we do have the money, then we still have to go through all this process. Before you know it, the 1.4 is now 2.4 million dollars. And then a lot of these projects go to the wayside because we can't get to them. So shifting priorities and saying, hey, we have these other funds out here for projects that probably won't be done next year. Shift that money, get these projects done, come back, find the funding for these other projects that, that essentially will take out five years to finish anyways. That, that's just my point. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. With that, I just have a comment. I think part of moving these projects forward is our staff. Where they're doing an awesome job, but I know we need to hire other engineers. These projects takes, they take a lot of time and commitment. So we will try to give you what you need to get these projects moving and in completion. That's, that's what we're promising to do here as the council.
I, with any luck this next year, we, we won't have any of the, of the bigger deadlines. And with any luck, we'll have some of those coming along. The things that take up time, when we had the sewer collapse, that took up a significant amount of our staff time. So I'm, I'm really hoping that we don't have anything like that happening again. We're ahead of the game, but that doesn't mean it won't happen. We had the ARPA funding and we had to focus on that. So yes, projects did fall behind that we would have liked to move forward with, but, but there were good reasons. And I'm with, I'm going to cross my fingers. If we don't have certain things happening in the next year, we're, we're going to be kicking out more, a better percentage of projects than we've done in the past.
Thank you.
Thank you for that comment. With that, I will open up to public comment. I see none. I bring it back to my colleagues. Any questions or concerns? Before I go out for a motion, I just want to make a note that Councilwoman Mejia stepped out at around 7:35 tonight. So with that, I'd like to entertain a motion to adopt this minute order.
I'll move to approve item E2. Second?
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. I was just a little disappointed, I'm not getting to hear from everyone in the audience. I thought they were going to present. But we'll see them throughout the year. You'll be in here throughout the year. So thank you for being here tonight. Moving on, next item.
Section F, Councilmember Reports, Announcements, and Future Agenda Items. This portion of the meeting is reserved for the mayor and councilmembers to make brief reports on boards, committees, and other public agencies, and at public events to request updates, to initiate future agenda items, and to take action on matters initiated under this section of the agenda. Under this section, the council may take action only on items specifically agendized and which meet further requirements for action.
Thank you, City Clerk Gonzalez. And I will be moving to my left, Councilmember Viegas. Any comments?
No comments, Mayor.
Thank you. Council, Mayor Pro Tim Rodriguez.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Gallegos. Being that we're early, I'm going to try to extend this out another half hour. But no, thank you. We did attend the neighborhood watch alongside the mayor. This happened last Thursday at part of District Two alongside other public officials, supervisor and coitress. Again, we had Police McAllister, Officer McAllister. We had some folks there from the community. And it was great to see them, that we're starting to revamp this again. Again, the mayor has stressed out that this is something that we want to do over and over through our neighborhood watch. We build unity in our communities. This was something that we were proud of doing prior to COVID. Looks like we're starting to slowly pick that up gradually, but more and more people want to be involved in that. So thank you again, Mayor, for, for your presence. Thank you again for the, for the words and, and for helping our community stay safe with each other. Last but not least, I do want to thank Councilwoman Mejia. She introduced me to the Untapped, the Well Untapped Fellowship Program, which I am now approved. So I'll be attending the, the Well Untapped Fellowship Program, which is water education for Latino leaders. They'll have a session this summer, five different sessions. I'll have my first one next month. I did attend a, a summit that they held in Visalia. Again, this is on water policy that's very important. A lot of the times I hear Keith talking about water and, and I get lost sometimes, Keith. I got to tell you that with Sigma and everything that's part of the policies that are being made before us, not only at the state level, but even here locally. Sometimes we just need good representation to be able to make sure that we have informed decisions. And I know it's a load on you, but I hope that alongside Councilmember Mejia, we can help in interpreting some of that water policy that that's being brought before us. So again, I wanted to thank Councilwoman Mejia. She graciously donated $200 of her expense account to help me with this grant. I'd extend that also to all my councilmembers if they'd like to do that. But thank you again for your support and I hope to come back a little bit more tapped with that fellowship on the water education. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you for that report, Mayor Pro Tim Rodriguez. Councilwoman Evans.
Oh, thank you. Was looking for you to go to. But anyway, thank you so very much. Last week, we were blessed to be able to go to the ribbon cutting ceremony for the Madera Community Hospital, and it was, it was outstanding. My colleagues and I, we were blessed to be able to present an award and also participate with the ribbon cutting ceremony. So thank God for Madera Community Hospital. We now have somewhere for people to go. I can't wait for them to be able to open up the maternity ward. I used to volunteer there and that was one of the biggest treats, to be able to hear the Brahms lullaby play when a baby is being born. So from what I understand, they're working on it now. So let's pray that they get that opened up and we'll be able to have babies coming there. Also, just to recap for tomorrow, Juneteenth, please, everyone, come. We will have VFW there in honor and showing a memorial for Brother Luther Slack. And also we will have the Neelies there for the proclamation. And there are another number of other things that will be happening as well. My colleague to the left of me is not going to be there. He generally rings the bell and does some fun stuff, but you'll be missed. But anyway.
In spirit.
He, yeah, he's not coming. He kicked us to the curb.
I'll be there in spirit.
Yes, yes, you will. Yes, you will. He's, he's also a Black Saints United. Yes, he is. Yes, he is. But anyway, everyone is welcome. We'd love to see you at 10 o'clock in the morning. Come out. It might be a little warm, but it'll be fun. So thank you very much.
Thank you for those comments. Councilmember Zachariah.
Just a last reminder for the July 4th event coming up. If you plan to beat, beat the heat and come join us, we'd always appreciate that. And anybody out there looking to volunteer or help out, it is a big effort. So we can always use to help. That's all.
All right. Thank you for your port. I just had a couple of things. City Manager Rodriguez and I met with the CEO at Valley Children's and heard some great things, even though it's not in the city. We are blessed to have that in our backyard, especially if you have kids or grandkids, because we can get in a car and go there. When my daughter was there, we heard helicopters coming in every night bringing kids. They have a big plan because you know care is costing more than, is the reimbursement is happening. So they're looking at putting in a nine restaurants, hotel with an event center below it, some housing and a strip of a shopping mall. So they're looking to kind of boost their tax dollars to bring more care to our Valley Children's here in Madera County. So that was some, some good news for us, I'm thinking for this community, knowing that they're going to be around for many years with that, looking forward into the future. I have to just say a shout out to Rodrigo here, who's one of my students, and I'm so proud of him to see him here tonight with his father. I've taught his, all his siblings. And so we hope to hear great things, political science and a minor comeback. You can sit here in these chairs, being elected and take our place because you are going to be a rising star in this community. So it was great seeing you tonight. And with that, I'll turn it over to our city attorney.
Thank you very much, Mayor. We have three items for closed session. Item G1 is Conference of Labor Negotiators pursuant to Government Code, Section 54957.6. The agency designated representatives are Arnoldo Rodriguez, Wendy Silva, Michael Lema, and Chee Johnson. And the employee organizations are Madera Affiliated, that City Employees Association, Madera Police Officers Association, Mid Managers Employee Group, and Law Enforcement and Management Employee Group. Item G2 is Conference of Labor Negotiators pursuant to Government Code, Section 54957.6. The agency representative is Arnoldo Rodriguez and Chee Johnson. The unrepresented positions are Police Chief Director of Parks and Community Services, City Engineer Director of Human Resources, Director of Information Technology, Building, Chief Building Official, Planning Manager, Director of Financial Services, Public Works Operations Director, and Director of Community Development. Item G3 is Public Employee Performance Evaluation pursuant to Government Code, Section 54957B1, Title City Attorney. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, I open it up to public comment. I see none. Any online or on Zoom?
We have none, Mayor.
I closed public comment at this time and we will go into closed session. And if you're, want to stick around, we'll be out in a little bit. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, City Clerk for bringing us back. I'm going to hand it over to our City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. There was one reportable action with regards to item G3 for the performance evaluation. The evaluation was conducted and resulted in a satisfactory or above rating. Thank you.
Thank you for that. I will adjourn this meeting at 9:47 and we will see you next Wednesday. Thank you.
You guys act like somebody likes you. You don't think you're the one.